I will call to order the Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four Prairie Grove City Council Meeting, roll call.
Here.
Rick Clayton.
Here.
Sue Pluck, here.
Tony Cunningham.
Here.
Paula DeMars.
Here.
Free Greg, here. Chris Howell. Doug Stumble.
Here.
We have a public comment period. Anyone from the public like to speak? Here and none. We'll move on to the approval of minutes of the May twentieth Prairie Grove City Council Meeting.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Treasures report was sent out. We don't have any, do we, excuse me, do we have any questions or comments about the treasures report? Here and none, we'll move it to audit. But no unofficial, excuse me, can't get it out tonight, Tony. With no unfinished business, we'll move on to new business and we'll start with a city ordinance, amending requirements regarding fireworks stands. And this just happens to go with our new development code. And it reclassifies the zoning, so that line D is what the change is. So fireworks will only be allowed in the following zones. A one, mixed use B one, and mixed use B two. Otherwise, everything else stayed the same.
Assuming the one usually goes up here by heart flicker and the other one are in one of these two zones.
If it doesn't change anything except for the way.
There's some rules placed at order first reading the title on second.
Do you have an emotion and second? Any further? Roll call.
Rick Hall.
Yes.
Rick Clayton.
Yeah.
Sue Pluck, yes. Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula DeMars, yes. Free Greg, yes. Doug Stumble.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend the requirements regarding parking.
Move first and the rules what he says third reading and after. Second.
You have a motion and second, any further? Roll call.
Rick Hall.
Yes.
Rick Place.
Yeah.
Sue Pluck, yes. Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula DeMars, yes. Free Greg, yes. Doug Stumble.
Yes.
Does that need an emergency clause?
Emergency, we emergency clause thing.
Ah, yeah, probably not.
Okay. We'll make sure since we have emergency clause down. All the zoning stuff.
No, we didn't.
Oh, I didn't have the emergency clause on. I was gonna say, we're not gonna shut anything down, so.
I mean, yeah, but they do have their stand part set up. Move the path emergency clause.
Second. Do you have a motion and second, any further? Roll call. Is it just, okay, is that it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same signs. Thank you. An ordinance amending requirements regarding green space donations, and this is something we've talked about over the last two months. If you've seen the packet that was sent, the real change is in five-five-eight. Which all it really does is switch out the idea that it used to say that the preference or the dedication was the one acre. For twenty, for twenty acres, and now it says that all new developments shall require a park development fee that is paid at five hundred dollars per lot. And then it's up to the council and the planning commission to decide if we would take land instead. So you'd have a preference on the finances of it.
Move place ordinance on first reading the title on.
I just, are we good with absorbing that? I mean, the, if we get the money, where do we have the manpower to build and maintain the parks versus them dedicating the parkland and maintaining it throughout DOA or. Citywide.
It can go to any park.
When they dedicate parkland, it is to the city itself. It's not part of the DOA. The DOA is usually just drainage facilities and the potential cost where they have to stay. And when they dedicate parkland, they normally don't get approved. They just give us the land and we have to cover the parks and things that we want to do differently. Okay, there are some exceptions, like Howard Hill wanted to feature in the DOA.
Correct.
And I think we're fine with that, but I think this actually benefits us from a place. We're getting the cash that could be used for any type of park perimeter maintenance.
Okay.
Second.
So I do have a motion and a second. Any further? Roll call.
Rick Hall.
Yes.
Rick Clayton.
Yeah.
Sue Pluck, yes. Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula DeMars, yes. Free Greg, yes. Doug Stumble.
Yes.
Ordinance to amend the requirement regarding green space.
Move further suspend the rule, wait second, third reading, adopt them. Second.
Have a motion and second, any further? Roll call.
Rick Hall.
Yes.
Rick Clayton.
Yeah.
Sue Pluck, yes. Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula DeMars, yes. Free Greg, yes. Doug Stumble.
Yes.
Item C is an ordinance amending the exceptions to the non-operational vehicles. There's two things that we're asking or presenting to y'all tonight. The easy one is line item D, which is you allow a hobby car permit. And the hobby car permit lasts for one year. There's nothing that says whether or not that were new or not. So the spirit behind a hobby car is to allow someone to spend that year fixing up their hobby car. So then it goes from a non-operational vehicle to an operational vehicle in a year. But since we didn't have a clause in there that would say that it's not renewable, then in essence, they could just come in every year, pay twenty-five dollars, and that that non-operational vehicle, they could spend the next ten years or however long they would want to. So we're asking y'all to entertain that it would be a one-year permit. Um, that would be non-renewable on that vehicle, the vehicle in which they've applied it towards. And then B, as of right now, we have, uh, the city itself has worked very, very diligently on dealing with non-operational vehicles. Trying to get a lot of this stuff moved out of our town and have people make decisions on what they want to do as far as the vehicles on that property. One of the issues we've ran across is that businesses, just like citizens, are under the same exact penalty. So you take the back porch here that uses a older vehicle or a non-operational vehicle as advertisement. Uh, on our current code, they have to move that vehicle as well. So part of what we have in front of you tonight is that someone like Back Porch could come in front of the planning commission and ask for conditional use. And then upon the approval of the planning commission, a business, and only a business, could use a non-operational vehicle for some form of advertisement per the approval of planning commission. Or we can say exactly what we're doing now and we can make the businesses move their vehicles.
And they would not pay the permit fee, or do you think they do not?
That has nothing to do with the permit. That would just be, right now, we just allow it to happen, but we've had, we, I, I have had some citizens say, why do I have to move mine? But Back Porch doesn't have to move theirs. The truth is Back Porch does have to move it. I've just kind of allowed it to linger so I can bring it before y'all. Because I do believe that there's certain things, when you think about a business, that is, uh, it matches the business as far as an antique shop using an antique vehicle for an advertisement. Ultimately, y'all have to make the decision if y'all agree with that. And, and if that's not the case, then I'll be, I will talk to the owners of Back Porch tomorrow.
The planning commission.
Quick question. So will any individual want to get a business license at their house, or does the city have a stipulation on that, like they said, oh, I have a business now? Just throw them out.
They would still have to go in front of the planning commission, and the planning commission has to approve any, any business that's allowed to have that advertisement. And I think in the, uh, so it has to be in use in a manufacturing industrial zone, mixed use, and persons design of vehicle shall obtain the conditional use permit from the planning commission.
Home business.
Yes. Commercial business located within a mixed use zone.
If I could expand on that, home, home occupation, you can have businesses in the home, I think, if you get removed. But there's a very strict list of things that you can do and besides your own an advertising commitment list, so. You would be able to, yeah, I think sometimes.
They'll have to come to the planning commission, but yes. They have, the planning commission will have to, no, the planning commission can approve. So the question right now is the rustic rooster who has multiple vehicles. They would have to do, just like the back porch, was just come in front of the planning commission. There's nothing in here that restricts it being one or twelve. It, it, it'll fall on the planning commission to decide whether or not they believe the rustic roofs should have twelve, or should they add one, or.
Are his non-operational? I thought they all ran.
And they, they may.
And they and Brandon pulled them in there.
Do we have businesses abusing this?
No, ma'am. It's really just those two, and it, it came up in discussion from some citizens that was upset because I'm, I made them move theirs.
Right.
And by, by your code, which is, is just right, they have every right to, to be upset about that one. Um, I felt like it wasn't, maybe I'm wrong on this, but I felt like it wasn't the nature of what we were trying to do when we're cleaning up our residential area, area versus what the back porch and rustic roofs is doing. But per that, per our code right now, um, they are required to move it as well. So we're just bringing it before y'all to decide if, if we should change it, and if, if y'all don't want to, it, I'm, I'm good with either one.
So the businesses would, that are grand, I said grandfathered in, they would still have to come before the planning commission now?
I would assume so. There's nothing in here that talks about, right, because, because once again, it, I guess grandfather is a weird concept, because even if we say the grandfathered in, we're just saying that grandfathered in and violating the code that we just haven't paid attention to. So I don't know if that would be a grandfathered in rule anyway.
They wouldn't be. They're, they're not, they're, they just have to become compliant by going to the planning commission to get approval. So Mr. Mayor, just in case I, I didn't catch on, the, the car repair shops in town, there's a few that have multiple cars there. They may or may not be there in extended period of time. Where does that fall in? It's commercial, but mixed use, I should say, but they may have cars that have been there more than twelve months.
There's a, there's an exception, and I don't know if it's written in here. Is it? Yes. Vehicles located in a vehicle sales business, vehicle repair businesses, junkyards, salvage yards. They're already part of the exception to the rule.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a good step forward. I'm going to place ordinance on first reading and.
I do have a motion and a second, any further? Roll call.
Rick Hall.
Yes.
Rick Clayton.
Yes.
Sue Pluck, yes. Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula DeMars, yes. Free Greg, yes. Doug Stumble.
Yes.
Ordinance to amend the non-operating vehicle. Move further suspend the rule, wait second, third reading.
Do you have a motion and a second, any further?
Real, real quick.
Yes, sir.
The planning area outside of the city limits, would that not be included in? The city has no authority over zoning outside the city.
Right.
Only the, only the development of land, division of land.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Rick Hall.
Yes.
Rick Clayton.
Yeah.
Sue Pluck, yes. Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula DeMars, yes. Free Greg, yes. Doug Stumble.
Item D is a resolution to revise the social media policy. This, this seems, seemingly happens a lot where we, we present something to y'all, and then after using it for a month, we realize that we missed some steps. Um, there was a few pages we left out, so that's just part of the authorized page. And then that, at the bottom, we just changed some wording from the owner shall not create any posts for the city on their personal page to any post that could be construed as originating from the city's page to, to be allowed or not allowed. And so we just made two, um, quick changes on that, but otherwise, we definitely appreciate the direction you allowed us to go with the social media policy.
Move approved. Thank you.
I do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. You. Item E is a resolution to accept SSI as the general contractor with a budget of one point four four, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and sixteen cents for the police department expansion. And so we started off with a one point five, two million dollar budget. Myself, chief, and a few other people had met with the contract, and we were able to, to move some stuff that we felt that we could continue to do on our own tile signage, different stuff like that. We were able to drop it down a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars, which presents you with the one point four million dollar budget. And, uh, and so we're just looking for the approval to go into contract with them.
What's title?
So if we, if you approve it tonight, we'll sign tomorrow. It's fifteen weeks out to get the steel here now. We have enough work for the city guys as far as moving the dirt. We've already started knocking down, we haven't knocked down walls, but we moved everything out today, or should I say, police officers moved everything out today. So we haven't moved over to City Hall. And, uh, but once we sign fifteen weeks before they can get stuff on it, so we're probably not starting construction till September, October. And then it's ten months after that. So they'll probably be with City Hall for about a year.
Yeah. So move. Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Following up on the police department expansion, we have, we had started with a one point two million dollar budget. We had it reserved with five hundred thousand dollars that we pulled from the general fund that we sat inside of a separate line item that y'all approved last year. We plan on making a seven hundred thousand dollar loan for the remainder. Out of that five hundred thousand, we have spent roughly, I don't have the exact number, sixty-eight, so roughly under seventy thousand on the lobby and on the architects. So for, um, once again, now we need one point four million, so, um, I'm roughly three hundred thousand dollars short. We do have multiple ways of, of pulling that money from different accounts. All of, all of it is, is good avenues for us to follow in, and none, none of it is going to hurt the direction of the city, but we found out that we could use ARPA funds for it. And so we're asking you to approve up to three hundred thousand dollars of the use of ARPA funds. So potentially, we could take all of it from all the funds. I don't believe, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Ulrich, because I don't believe that that's the direction we would necessarily go into. But we wanted to kind of cover all our bases on, uh, on how we could use all the funds for this project and that.
Just for clarity, the ARPA funds, we, we spent the, well, roughly over a little four hundred thousand dollars out of the ARPA funds on COVID-related uh, employee wages back two years ago. And so there was just a hundred million dollars left, and the council had given us the approval to use that for sewer improvements that we're doing, which is one of the things that you can use ARPA. And when we started looking for the additional money for the police expansion to make up the difference, we talked about a lot of things. We talked about pulling it out of reserves. We still have enough reserves covered to literally lower our reserves to two or three hundred thousand dollars. We didn't want to do. Uh, we talked about taking out the sales tax. I did think there's still enough in our sales tax fund uh, to pay for it as well, but again, it would lower the balance down to an uncomfortable level. Uh, I'm not saying we have that money out for us to spend on anything else, but we did buy a police guard out of it every year. Not any other capital approval deal that you want to spend money on. But we looked at the ARPA funds, once we found out we could use those. Uh, there is other funds that the water department has, uh, in hand. We've got several reserve accounts that have pretty good balances in them right now. We felt like it was a pretty fair, uh, way to look at it, is to take those three hundred thousand dollars from ARPA funds and ship some of that burden to the water department, which had funds that have their additional costs. So I think that's the best option for the city. It's never fun trying to take up deficits. It's always painful, but I think this is probably the best option that we can come up with, and I think it works for everybody.
Mr. Mayor, quick question. I think I heard you say in the construction, you know, if it started October, November, it, it, it'll definitely go on into the following year.
Yes, sir.
So what does that mean if, uh, if anything, for the new budget cycle or, or that? So does the ARPA funds carry over to the new budget?
We have to have the ARPA funds obligated by December this year.
Yeah.
And by obligated, that means there has to be any sewer project using, there has to be a contract. So same thing here. Once we obligated this project, we signed contracts, but we've obligated that three hundred or however much we end up spending.
Right. So obligated, but, you know, I assume it wouldn't be pain in full until the next budget cycle.
That's correct, sir.
And we are also talking about laying the loan with the bank as long as we possibly can, which is going to free up monthly payments for the bank. So that, again, has a positive impact on the budget for this year. So instead of, we budgeted for twelve months worth of payments, we may end up, end up with three or four. So that saves a lot of money as well.
If we don't obligate the ARPA money by the end of the year, we lose it, don't we?
Yes, sir.
We are just obligated prior residents.
I, I think if, if Chuck can get his sewer projects in line, it's obligated. Trust me, because there are going to be, there are going to be more than.
I don't believe my month there. So we were looking at not to exceed three hundred thousand, is that correct?
Yes, sir. How are your sales tax receipts running against your budget or your projection?
Probably one percent lower right now than what I budgeted, but I budgeted six to seven percent increase every year. Uh, historically, you've got to go back about fifteen years to see any year to year that's less than six percent. So I think that we try to get that six percent margin. Right now, we're running just under that.
Have you already got money in yet?
No, we don't have it yet. We'll have it next week.
Okay.
Downman.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And moving on to item G, it's a resolution to authorize the purchase of land and the donation of additional land from Richard Snyder, the property directly behind Snyder Grove. And in front of y'all, you, you'll actually see where we were. I was able to print out, um, some paperwork. It's kind of hard to, to understand it. But if you're in Prairie Meadows, you run directly to the back. The bottom side of your map will be Highway sixty-two. This whole thing is floodplain. Uh, so he's looking to the bottom eleven acre, excuse me, bottom nine acres, which is what you see highlighted on your page. He's offering us to buy two acres for fifty thousand dollars and then donate the remaining seven as a tax deductible charitable donation. And the only other thing he's asking for is some naming rights. And when I say naming rights, he wants to call it, um, like Schneider's Sports Complex. So in essence, what we're doing, even though it's a little bit different as far as the, how we'll write up or how Mr. Park will write up the charitable donations, will, will get nine acres for fifty thousand dollars. And we do, we have a sixty thousand dollar line item inside of our parks and rec that, you know, we've talked about pickleball courts, we talked about basketball courts, we've talked about knocking down the, the, the old storage on Mock Park and, and put the pavilion there. And, and so every one of those things have came over budget, and we haven't been able to use that money. So now we're sitting here halfway through, and potentially, we could just use fifty of that sixty thousand dollar line item to buy future land for development of Parks and Recreation. And we do plan, if, Chuck, I, I may just turn it over to you, but I know we've talked about softball fields and soccer fields. Not that any of that is in, in full content just yet, but we also know that we lose a softball field with the, uh, expansion that's going on at the, at the school right now with the sports complex. So we do know that there's a priority in getting land so we can build a softball field as we gear up for next year.
We've been working on this, let's try to provide to the year, and we finally found a, it's a technical agreement that we all be satisfied. And, uh, we had talked about, but one of the things he brought up was maybe the Luba fees, and part of the agreement to get multiple partners, and they all tell us to pay their own hard place fees and hit the development. And so we gained the, the land, the basically, you know, nine acres at a value of twenty-five thousand an acre. And then their children will still have to pay sixty, fifty, sixty-three thousand dollars in, in Luba fees when they go to five flat. So it's kind of a win-win for the city. And one of the things that we always have an issue with is trying to find land that we can use exactly for parks.
It looks like a great situation, but maybe I would most approve that. It's just a highlighted part. He's going to try to build on, uh,
Do it two months.
It was in a floodplain, he wants to put him on stilts, and he's trying to get approval on what he can do now, but so it'll be the highlighted.
We've been looking at this land for parks for twenty years. I talked to your friend about it. I can't tell you how many times, so. It's, we've looked at this land as an option.
Second.
So I do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. And with that, we'll go on to reports of committees, sanitation, Sue Pluck.
The same thing going, guys are really happy. I don't have to turn over.
My.
Summer hours, don't you?
Yes. And we have the drivers rotating every day of the week, and one of them stays an additional couple hours to connect to them. They always had one, but I didn't have that many hours to pick it up. And so we gotta go back to understand the problem. But the real thing is.
Street department, Rick Clayton.
For true.
Uh, seeing the overlay project we did on the south side of town, it kept some ball of water, my structural device, that was all completed. Uh, I think it looks really well. It's really good. Uh, we've done a good job on it. And, uh, we also did a revinks out of the town. It was one that needed to be able to, I think it's a lot of, of dump truck traffic on the development, and some people were asking, we'll, we'll, we'll do that at the same time. And they came in under the budget that y'all approved, so, uh, they've been keeping about twenty-two thousand dollars under budget, so.
Hey Chuck, it's an, it's an education for me. And so by the way, they were very good at what you, I guess, put in contract to be in the, sort of that straight, have whatever the width of the street is. You probably know where I'm going, like at Mock Park, first, you know, I'll make a six to eight feet or whatever that is, that wasn't resurfaced on, on either side. Does, over time, does that, that transition narrow down?
It gets much better than what it is. It might be packed of those empty traffic, but those shoulders are basically more of parking. And where drops off, you have to pay.
It, it is quasi-hazardous for motorcycles and all that, sort of that, that unevenness there. So it was something to, to watch.
May take an opportunity to strike it, let it realize that that is, that's what's supposed to drive.
You just referring to if a motorcycle pulls off the park and.
Yeah, so, so when you pull off the park, there's, before you go transition, if they were to hit that, that edge, uh, there, so.
Still, it still doesn't hurt to strike because it makes you aware.
I think that sidewalk is going to be raised if we ever favor that again too.
Yeah.
The biggest issue with there and on the dump park was just trying to find a, a stopping point, you know, how wide we were going.
Right.
Without getting into, uh, private property. And so we, we had to go down to there and find something.
He was trying to get within budget.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said. I could tell. If they quoted whatever the, the width of the street is, that's, that's what they.
We, we get all our quotes by the time, and so then we had to calculate that.
Right.
That's the reason they can't hit under budget because they didn't keep the tons, what they protect.
Want to see what Doug's number on, or is it Chuck?
Uh, still waiting on completion of the wastewater, uh, treatment facility. There is some electrical components still haven't come in yet to be able to put that new train on, uh, rotation. Uh, they think they've got a pretty good way to bring it online. Once it starts, uh, we will have a startup meeting tomorrow or Wednesday, it's be Wednesday. And I'll be with the contractors and engineers on site, and we'll talk to operators about what we can do as far as startup. Well, we're able to take out one of our clarifiers so they can start cleaning it, get it prepared, and so that is, that's a long one bit, but, uh, all of our improvement projects right now seem to be really in, in lag, like we're trying to get, we're trying to get people on site. And, uh, at least, I sent out an email last Monday expressing my discontent with the way things are going and how slow they are dragging out. And, uh, hopefully, it's the fire to some of them, I know a lot of people working out of town now that are ahead of them. But the suite department, they were on Southside Grove, that expansion. It doesn't seem like they have enough men to get down, and we're already almost thirty days over on that contract. So depending on how much they ask for any tents, and we're. Now made them aware.
I have one.
How was that? That's, that was doing.
Your line that we're doing, they're over fifty percent completed. They are doing very good. They don't have anything to deal with other than about thirty percent into it. They hit some rock. But once they got, you know, this, you know, ten, fifteen percent farther, then they got into. And they said it's been pretty easy. And they said it's been pretty easy to do. We had a, a meeting about that last Tuesday. And, uh, it says it's going really well. So it's, it's rolling in front of the time.
If you look up on the screens, uh, we This kind of came to attention late last week, so there wasn't an opportunity to put this for y'all for about tonight. But I want to make you aware of it and get your direction on this, whether or not you want us to go ahead and put together some formal action for next month or not. I know uh, we have a buyer of some property and seller of some property. They're sitting in the back here representing this tonight. And I think they're anxious for a lot of reasons, interest rates are locked in and other things that they would like to get a resolution on this as quickly as possible. This is out by Prairie Grove City Lake. So this is Prairie Grove Lake Road. And at the bottom of the dam, the city's driveway that goes up to the water creek is planted right here. And this is the outfall from the lake. So the water creek, which runs from the dam, uh, runs underneath the county grove there and extends all the way to Lake Fork. Uh, many years ago in the sixties, I believe, although the surveyor told me that the days go back to the fifties, which surprised me because I thought it was sixties, but um, the city bought that land to build that reservoir. And part they didn't buy was this tract of land right here. And there's a house on it. You know when the house was moved in, Mr. Evans?
I think it was something during the fifties.
In the fifties. So it's been there a long time.
Yeah.
And there was a survey that actually preceded the city survey that shows a different alignment than what the city survey shows. And talking to Alan Green Associates who surveyed it as part of this, uh, he said there's a lot of errors in that original survey. Uh, the main thing is that land was described to the creek. But it also had some language in there that it was not to exceed, uh, the section line, which is right here. So seventy years ago, this house got put in the wrong place and it actually, you can see the property line goes right through the corner of the house. What they're asking us to do is to give them a quick lane need for this little triangle right here that runs up to the creek. It's point two-one acres. Uh, they've assumed that they've owned it all these years. City assumed they owned it too. As far as the city's concerned, it probably does affect us one way or other. We don't have to use the land, Chuck.
Yep. There's no practical use for it ever.
So on the other side of the creek. I don't think we would oppose.
It's not big enough to build anything on and, uh, we don't need it for egress.
So I don't think the city would have any opposition. Police staff wouldn't have any opposition to be beating that back to them. Seeing as how it was an error in the legal descriptions. But you will have to do that for a revolution and you can't do that until next month.
And Mr. Parker, if, if we do that, I do think documenting sort of the error in the first thing from a legal coverage perspective of, you know, somebody retrospectively looking back at why did, why did the council, you know, deed something to a private citizen or whatever else? Just making sure that's, that's very well documented.
Yeah, I, we've got to get around the constitutional prohibition of giving exactly something left.
We'll be fine.
That may actually make it worse, right, Mr. Parker?
Maybe, maybe not, but I mean, it's I, I, I think what you, you end up getting into really tall deeds in Arkansas law and, well, I've treated it as mine for all of these many years and there's a very valid boundary dispute we've never considered in ours. And there are some discrepancies with the two sermons. It, it would probably cost more to get into litigation to give it away, or I mean to
To sell it.
Right, yeah. Resolving a boundary dispute that we may lose anyway. So.
Yeah, I think if we can put the legal ease around it, it makes sense.
Well, I think we got enough thinking to wrap around that though.
Okay. We need a, need some kind of formal.
Since we were not able to bring it before this time, but we wanted to make sure that all parties involved would understand how we approach it for next month. So that we can prepare the documentation of that because they want to continue, you know, switch their equity system of the plan.
So our question is, is everybody good with a permanent resolution back next month? If Parker.
Yeah, if it's well done. If it's Parker, then.
Call it, recall.
Um, unfortunately, uh, down quite a bit, Larry. Uh, for the rest of month to the, to the about ten thousand dollars, uh, left collection going to the city. It's not the same, same month last year. So, uh, not sure. I'll, I'll reach out to Rachel or Graham. See if there's any, any insights they may have on that. Not, not heading into good direction, please.
And Fire Department, recall.
Chief Dobbs, how's the truck doing? I know you sent out an email or
Still on the fail. I had a couple of things. They had a meeting.
That was everything I was going.
Couldn't you just let a little bit of air out of the tires?
He said he's got big shoulders. Parks and Rec, Mr. Powell's not here tonight. He is homesick. We had plans to update you on the, uh, the land on Schneider Grove, but it worked out that we could present it to y'all. So the only thing that we really had to, to talk to y'all about was the fact that we put the fence at the pool, which has been well received. Um, side side is business as usual. And so police, Doug Stumble.
First chief.
Started moving everything out. Stayed through. Police was moved today. So four of you are done. Cause the next year over with. So I'm sure city hollow too. So among that, busy halls are up. I don't feel that flex weight or calls are always up. So I just want to get everything.
Chief, are we recording, converting over to our digital radios now and?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we, um, and they're working great. So there's, there's no complaints at all. Um, great. Um, worked great. Actually, we paid everybody. There's probably a few of them who's dead. We really had a little shoot call. There's no complaints.
Are you good, chief? Are you in a personal conversation?
No, no. There was a question on how this report, the radios weren't.
No, I just said, he, he was so quiet. He wasn't, he wasn't speaking to the crowd no more. So I'm just saying where we're at.
I know the rate that we got, we, you know, when we got through the three, we paid for the road, they, the contract probably go up to fifteen hundred dollars. Now they're quite thirty-five hundred dollars. So we, we, we're good for radios. Um, I did get the grant. I think I spoke about that. So I'm wanting to get my grant. So we got a seventy-four hundred grant. Actually, Parker originally sent that out. It was the last minute email. I was saying we'd send it out. We had some grant, law grant. So we got that, got two additional line differences of work.
Perfect. Long range plan in Bridgeline.
Yep. Okay. We had a few things. Uh, the first was the conditional use permit, so fireworks. Uh, two, three, nine, one here at Parkway by Christopher Portillo. Uh, we granted that. There was a request for an amendment to the conditions of the conditional use approval of legendary fitness by Emily and Michael Wester. Uh, so a year, well, a year in August, they asked us to, they had no plans to, uh, upgrade the outside of their metal building. It is part of the uh, building code, we requested that anything highway facing. Uh, they initially said that wasn't really in their budget, so we gave them a year to make up some costs from getting started and they came back to us and basically, uh, said that they couldn't do it without taking a wall out. There were several things that were working against it. Uh, with it, they really didn't bring anything other to present us. I think they were just wanting us to say it was probably okay. I don't know if the words in their mouth. But we essentially told them that they could look at alternative things, maybe like a mural or faux brick. Uh, some other option if they presented us with actual visuals to approve versus just uh, verbiage that they were going to do it. So we gave them until their, until the August, the year's up to come back and present something to us. Uh, there was a conditional use for George Ferris to display and sell storage buildings in a M U B two zone at one oh one eight Walnut Grove Road, which is the corner of Paradise Parkway and Walnut Grove right up here. Uh, we were fine with that. He's going to be there running a lack of business. So unlike some of the others, it will be a land store. And then we reconvened as the board of adjustments and for a fence variance by Felipe and Kirshian Melendez to fill specific requirements from the fence ordinance at two oh four East Ram Street. Our fence ordinance requires that the pretty side of the fence faces the neighbors or faces out. In this particular instance, uh, there was built up brush. There was just a couple of different hardships around the property that made more sense to face the neat side in. And so they asked for us to appeal that and we agreed with that. I think probably worse case scenario was to pull their business permit, right?
It was originally part of our
Did they ever get with you? Have they got with you yet? I know you offered to help.
Thank you, man. Senior, senior citizens, Paula DuLons.
The construction is complete, except for the bathrooms and they think they're going to start on those soon. So I'm, they got the grant money. Do that, but Their attendance is staying up too. Lance said, I went up and played bingo with them the other day. There was a big crowd of us.
That was already before Paul.
Thank you.
The library.
It is library, Tony Cunningham.
What was the, the deal with, I was down there today and Megan was explaining about it. You've gotten a contract to have part of the floors re-surfaced or something because of the, the salt. Well, she's got a, she's got a bid.
What's she getting you?
Okay. So anyway, that, that's ongoing. And Yeah, something about the salt over the, probably caused the, whatever. And all the shelving's up in place. Looks great. If you haven't been down to our library, you need to get down there and check it out. Great place to go. Uh, they've already started their summer programs and last week they had about a hundred and twenty participants. Yeah. And Amanda does a lot of that. And Megan has some kind of record and she can look and see how many takings or checkouts or whatever it is this year versus last year. And they're up about a thousand. So that's the first increase they've had since COVID. So people are getting back out a little bit, getting out to the library. They had two hundred at their pool party. So, and they have changed their personnel a little bit. Instead of Scott and his wife, it's just going to be Scott and Amanda and Megan. So I think Scott's going to work Saturday, what, Tuesday through Saturdays. Like that's, well, uh, that's why I'm here to give you this information. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have from the library.
And in our announcements, before, before I just jump to announcements in front of each council member, um, uh, we also, I found this when we were moving stuff from upstairs getting ready for the police department expansion. And so I gave one to every planning commission member and then one to every council member. And that is just some old history of Prairie Grove. Uh, the wages at that time, I think. Sorry, do you remember what year? We, we thought it was in the seventh, yeah, sixty-nine or seventy. The wages of Prairie Grove was a dollar an hour and it just gives you a little history. Mrs. Cut, I have one for you as well. And anyone in the crowd, I do have more of the walk audit paperwork in the back. So if anyone wanted one and didn't get one, I do have more and they're all for public. And, uh, June twenty-ninth is our fireworks show directly across from the high school. And then June thirtieth will be Living Faith Church, formerly known as Highway one seventy, but now known as Walnut Grove. Do you have any other announcements?
The chamber is cooking a lot for city employees thirsty at the chamber building from eleven to one. Chamber members and city boys.
Anything else?
To get out to the pool last evening where
That worked out really well.
Very appreciative of what this, what you, uh, did for all the city employees.
Thank you. Curtis Stewart and his friend Mark Grant donated most of the food. So while we're in the public forum, let's thank them as well. It was a, it was a great turnout. Last year we probably had about fifty. This year we, we figured somewhere between at one fifty to two hundred. So it was good. We did some doll prizes and different stuff. So we had a good time. Yes. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, seeing how you have nothing else on your agenda, I move to your own.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Y'all have a good night.